All rise. The Court of Common Pleas for the 6th Judicial District in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is now in session. The Honorable President Judge John J. Tracilla, the Honorable Stephanie D'Amintevich, the Honorable Elizabeth K. Kelly, the Honorable Daniel J. Raybender Jr., the Honorable John J. Mead, the Honorable Joseph M. Walsh III, the Honorable Marshal J. Pizzanini, the Honorable Richard Lanzillo, the Honorable Chad Connelly, the Honorable Ernest J. DeSantis Jr., the Honorable Michael F. Thon. Do you please remain standing? Judge Tracilla will lead us to the pledge of allegiance.
I... ...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Well, good morning and welcome to our courtroom on this, although despite being a bit dreary outside, it's bright and eerie inside here. And I think it's a celebration of all that is good in Erie County. As we progress, I had to laugh, someone, I was walking down the hall, they said, "Keep it short." I said, "Well, is there a microphone out there?" "Please next three out or should go by." No, I did want to welcome everyone, but I think the appropriate thing to do now is to start this ceremony would be to call upon the Most Reverend John Desch and ask him to give us a blessing, an invocation. Thank you.
As I was finishing Mass this morning, I realized that two of my high school friends, John Tracilla and David Ridge, would be serving on the Erie County bench at the same time. And I immediately left the chapel of St. Jude's and went to the Weather Channel to see if hell has in fact frozen over. It's my honor, your honor. Thank you. In his first few months in his service as the new Holy Father several years ago, Pope Francis had said to the world, "Each of us has a vision of good and evil. We have to encourage people to move towards what they think is good. Everyone has his own idea of good and evil and must choose to follow the good and fight evil as they conceive them." That would be enough to make the world simply a better place. We are all very proud that we have elected several people that have dedicated their lives to fight for better lives for all of us, a life in a community that deserves to live in goodness, a life, a community that deserves to be led by people who truly serve in order to make our community and our world a better place. We pray now for those who will soon serve the people of Erie County. Father, you guide and govern everything with order and hope and love. Look upon our newly-elected officials as they begin their service to the people of Erie County. May they find strength in your word to be their source of guidance and direction. And Father, look upon all the members of our county and city courts and governments throughout our land and fill them with the spirit of your wisdom. May they always act in accordance with your will and their decisions be for the peace, justice, and well-being of us all. May they always look to your Holy Spirit for courage, guidance, and strength. And may they help to influence all of us to be the people that you call us to be, people of hope, people who serve each other. We ask this in your most holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Father. It's probably more than a coincidence that as you were leaving St. Jude's, I was leaving a meeting with Bishop Persico, and he assured me that your title of one senior won't be happening anytime soon. Thank you, Father. I would like to welcome our federal brethren here, and that's Judge Richard Lanzillo. Thank you for coming across the street here, celebrating federalism in every way, and I do appreciate your attendance. I would also like you to remember our bankruptcy judge, the Honorable Thomas Adreski. Just keep him in your thoughts and prayers. His family is going through some things, and I think it's worthy of that. We also miss District Court Judge, Federal District Court Judge Susan Paradise Baxter, but capably represented by Judge Lanzillo. Want to welcome our senior judges here today. That would be the Honorable Chad Connelly, the Honorable Ernest J. DeSantis, and where is the Honorable Michael Palmasano? There he is. So, thank you, Judge Palmasano. I also would like to thank Judge Cunningham, Judge Garheart, and the other senior judges, Judge Boza and Judge Dunleavy, General Dunleavy, for their efforts over the last three years in helping us as a bench meet the needs of the people, as this will be the first time in, I think about three years, since the loss of our dear friend and colleague, the Honorable Judge Sam Rock, where we will now have nine judges again for a full complement. So hats off to our seniors who stepped up and to all my colleagues who really, I guess, toed the line, rode the boat, whatever saying you want to use, if you're a PJ Fleck fan in Minnesota, but they all jumped in, all hands are on deck to your benefit. So, thank you very much. I also would like to recognize some of our other public servants here today. We have State Representative Bob Marzkey back there. Thank you. We have Gary Lee here, representing our county executive. He does a great job. Captain Del Kemmerer could not be here. We have dear friend Andre Horton here, second-best player on our baseball team in New York. No, but he represents the constituents in a very competent way. He's here. We also have, I think Carl Anderson is here, Councilmember Carl Anderson, Kathy Fatika, recently retired, and she deserves some praise. We have former governor and director of Homeland Security, who will make remarks, Tom Ridge is here, and we appreciate that. Retired state senator Jane Earl is here, and I'm not sure where she is. And, oh, thanks, Jane. And we also have magistrate district judge Brian McGowan. If I missed anyone, please, those are my apologies. Oh, Mary Shaw is here. So, I could go on and on. Let me see, anybody else? I see Bill Friedman. No, I'm just kidding. Anyway, thank you, though, and I didn't want to try to recognize you. I would also like to thank someone who deserves recognition but doesn't always get it, and that is the Assistant to our Court Administrator, and that's Jen Critcher. Jen, very... Very wise for anyone either joining the bench today or a matter of public service to know that there are several unsung heroes that should always be recognized by you and never taken for granted. Jen, thank you for putting this program together. You put a lot of time and energy into this, and it's much appreciated. With those salutations, again, I want to welcome everyone. It is a great day for Erie County and its citizens, and we'll recognize those who have stepped up and really put themselves in a position to serve others, which is admirable. But I will remind them, and I'm sure it's not lost on any of them, they didn't get here alone. This courtroom is a testament to that. So let's celebrate the efforts of family, friends, and certainly those that put their name in to serve. With that, what I'd like to do is recognize the Honorable Elizabeth Kelly to give the oath to our longstanding coroner, Lyle Hook. And as Lyle says, "It's always good when you see Lyle. It may not be good if he sees you."
Lyle, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I...
Aye.
State your name.
State your name.
Would anyone like to be coroner?
I...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support...
Obey...
Obey...
And defend...
And defend.
The Constitution...
The Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth...
Of the Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge my duties...
And that I will discharge my duties.
Of my office...
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations for that.
Your honors, distinguished guests, candidates, I appreciate the opportunity to do this again. I was thinking, sitting over there a few minutes ago, that the swearing-in takes about a minute to give everyone the ability to swear at me for four years. So it works out very well. The courthouse has kind of an awful phone system. I spend most of my day fielding calls for people that want to know how to get a dog license, how to pay a fine, whatever reason, it ends up in my office. And I always tell them, "I'm sorry, this is the coroner's office," and they gasp. And I'll say, "I'm glad you didn't need me." So that always seems to appreciate, they appreciate that very much. At any rate, I appreciate the fact, I'm honored that, I've been doing this 20 years now, I'm halfway through Merle Wood's tenure, I don't think I'm going to go the distance, but there is money on that, by the way, if you want to get involved. The best part of it is that this is the only way, it gives me the ability to serve everybody in Erie County in the only way that I can, as unpleasant as that may be some days. Actually, I used to say that I only ran for coroner to get the parking spot. So I still have that, I got that going for me. But I appreciate it, and like I always say, I hope the next time I see you, you can see me back. Thank you.
Next, we'll recognize our district attorney, that's Jack Denary. John Denary, if he could come forward, please. We'll have Ann Stey, who is the Erie County Detective, the Honorable Chief. Welcome.
Who would raise your right hand. I, state your name.
I, Jack Denary.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support...
Obey...
Obey...
And defend...
And defend.
The Constitution...
The Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of this Commonwealth.
Of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge...
And that I will discharge...
The duties of the Office of District Attorney...
The duties of the Office of District Attorney.
And enforce that County of Erie...
And enforce that County of Erie.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you, judges. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and obviously, thank you to the people of Erie County who saw fit to reelect me, and that vote of confidence is not lost on myself, and I thank you. Oftentimes, people in this position, they use the phrase that they feel blessed, and I do feel blessed, however, I'm sure most of my staff who's in the back here are saying, "Well, if he feels so darn blessed, why is he cursing all the time around the office?" So I'll use the term "good fortune." I do have the good fortune of having a wonderful staff, and that word really encompasses so much of what they do, from the support staff to the detectives, to the attorneys, of course. They are leaders, each and every one. My first assistant, Beth Hers, I always tell people, "I could fall down at this microphone right here today, and tomorrow would be operations as usual." However, if she fell down today, it would not be so tomorrow, and that's how valuable she is to the office. Likewise, Gillian Pauley, my office manager, who has the misfortune of being just 10 feet away from my office each and every day, and has to deal with that, and she does an outstanding job corralling people, herding cats, whatever you'd like to say. It is truly a wonderful, and oftentimes, a thankless job. And finally, my chief county detective, Mark Shaw, who came from many years with the Pennsylvania State Police and has brought that leadership and that notion of hierarchy and command to the detectives, the Erie County detectives, which are the police force here in this courthouse, one of the police forces here in the courthouse. And of course, I have to thank before others, probably the best consigliere one could ever have, my wife, former Senator Jane Earl, who often, people forget, she was one of the top prosecutors in this county a number of years ago. So, thank you. And I think finally, what many people don't realize in terms of the district attorney's office, is what we do and how we make it work, and it's just, it's not law and order all in the courtroom all the time. And I think it really is a, it's a tremendous effort on the part of everyone in this courthouse and others, the judges, the criminal court administrator, Julia Bagnoni, who truly herds cats each and every trial term, and outside of trial term, making sure all the pleas are taking place in the scheduling, and obviously, the judges, support staff, who also make that happen, and their tip staffs, the court reporter sitting behind me who makes that work, the magisterial district judges who make it work at the first level of criminal prosecution, the sheriff's deputies that you see all around in this courtroom, they make it work. And finally, a very much an unsung hero in this criminal justice system is our county public defender, Patrick, Patricia Kennedy, who commands a staff of her own. And people think, "Well, that's the public defender's office." What they don't realize is how important the public defender's office is to the criminal justice system, the people that they represent, the rights that they fight to maintain and do a zealous job in the courtroom. We are technically enemies in the courtroom, but we are professionals, and we treat each other that way. And I am very pleased in Erie County because she doesn't get the headlines that she should. Erie County is very fortunate to have the public defender, Patricia Kennedy, that we do. And so I thank all of those individuals I named, and I'm sure I'm leaving a few out, that make this criminal justice system and my job in Erie County a pleasure to do each and every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. As a former prosecutor myself and a member down at the bench, having viewed your office and your leadership, I just wanted to thank you because your job, as some people have said, you drive and have and operate some of the most heavy equipment out there. And if you're under investigation, it could be owners, but to Jack Denary's credit, he doesn't see statistics, he sees people. He's been progressive, he's been a part of the system of justice of reform in Erie County, and I think we're all better off for this. Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it. Next, we call upon County Controller Kyle Faust. I have a great honor to give the oath to Kyle. He had asked me, we share some common bond as his father, the late, great Paul Faust, public servant.
Still alive?
Yeah, yes, okay, good. Sorry about that. Paul, are you here? And my Uncle John were best friends. My Uncle John has passed. What they did, they both were committed to service. So let me recognize that Kyle follows in the footsteps of not only his dad, but his family, and now he moves on to County Controller, who are our fiscal watchdog. Very proud of you, Kyle, on your service, years of service on County Council. You always were independent, committed to doing the right thing, and again, I think it benefited all of us. So, thank you. So let me now ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Kyle Faust.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support...
Obey...
Obey...
And defend...
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the County of Erie...
And the Charter of the County of Erie.
And that I will discharge...
And I will discharge...
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you for that, those kind remarks, Judge. I'll let my dad know you said hello. And thank you, and thank you for the warm hand, and thank you for being here, and especially if you're one of the 33 people that made this happen today, I really appreciate you being here today. As a Democrat, I'll start with that, it's very difficult to follow Lyle and Jack, both Republicans, I don't think they're harmed by saying that, not for the reasons you might think, though. Lyle, who has a great sense of humor, as you saw, is tough to follow, and Jack has a great tan, as well as a great sense of humor. So I have neither of those, so I will be short and beyond, beyond going to my duties here. But I am very honored that the people of Erie County put their confidence in me to be the Erie County Controller for the next four years. And as Jack indicated, it's very difficult to go through this type of ceremony and say remarks without thanking those that really mattered during the campaign even before that. I'm blessed with two great parents. My mother is here today, Jackie, and my dad is in the hospital, actually. He's been suffering from some issues that he will be part of this celebration very, very shortly, but the mentorship and the guidance and the education, everything else that good parents provide a son are certainly fulfilled in me, and I will never forget it and always appreciate it. My brother Kevin is here, he was my campaign manager, my main sign guy, and I couldn't have done it without him. Many of the courthouse employees will know who my treasurer was, Sue Ellen Pasquale, who for the longest time was one of, if not the most capable employee in the Erie County courthouse, and I was very fortunate to have her on my side. My in-laws, both Jerry and Cheryl Cass are here. Jerry used his truck as a billboard to go throughout Erie County all summer and fall, and I couldn't have done it without his help. My son Evan, who is in school today, who became a TV sensation over the fall, and he personally takes responsibility, as I can hear Kathy Fatika laughing, she says he gets a free education for all that he did for me in the fall, and I agree. And just really, my entire family, I have three sisters, I'm sorry, four sisters and three brothers, they all chipped in at events, helped get sign locations, spread the word of the campaign, and when you only win by an eyelash, it really all adds up. But lastly, my beautiful wife Casey, we have had a very busy year this year. We got engaged, we moved three houses, we got married, we ran a fall campaign, and we're both looking to the routine of just going to the office every day, almost as a respite. But I ran on a platform of trying to breathe some fresh air into the controller's office. I feel that I'm honest, and even though I was a proud Democrat as a member of council, I always tried to be independent. I enjoyed the fiscal oversight of the job that I had as a councilman, controlling the budget. I look forward, starting this afternoon, to begin to meet with the staff on a more formal basis, and soon, all the department heads and elected officials, to let them know and reinforce the proposition that we can work together while working independently at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle, again, for your service and long history of family legacy. Very proud of that. Next, we'll recognize our new county council members, and we'll start with Kim Clear. If Kim could come forward, please. Welcome, Kim. Congratulations. I will administer the oath and ask you to raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Kim Clear.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support...
Obey...
Obey...
And defend...
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the County of Erie...
And the Charter of the County of Erie.
And that I will discharge...
And that I will discharge...
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office...
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you all for being here. I'll just be very brief. I want to thank all of my family, my friends, who supported me. From the very beginning, they understood my dream. I wanted to be an advocate for Erie County. I wanted to make sure that I could be a part of what Erie County has to offer. I want to bring it to fruition, and that's what I'm here to do, to serve Erie County. I am honored and humbled to take the place of Kathy Fatika, who served so beautifully these last few years, and her mentorship means so much to me. I am so anxious to work with the other council members and to start this journey. Thank you very much.
Next, we'll recognize Ellen Shalhoub.
Hi, Ellen.
Congratulations. Again, I have the honor of administering the oath to Ellen. I'll ask that you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Ellen Shalhoub.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support...
Obey...
Obey...
And defend...
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the County of Erie...
And the Charter of the County of Erie.
And that I will discharge...
And that I will discharge...
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you all for being here, and I'll also just take a minute to tell you how incredibly blessed and honored I feel to have been elected as District Seven's representative to County Council. I want to congratulate everyone else who was elected and all those that I will be working with also. I pray for the wisdom and the courage for us to make the right decisions and do the right things. I would also like to thank all of my family and friends that are here today to support me on a day that I know will become one of the most memorable in my life. And I'd like to finish with a promise that I will do my best to serve and represent the citizens and businesses of District Seven as well as all of Erie County. Thank you.
Next, we'll recognize Brian Shank, County Council. If you could come up and be sworn. Thank you for having me administer the oath. Welcome, Brian. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Brian Shank.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support...
Obey...
Obey...
And defend...
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the County of Erie...
And the Charter of the County of Erie.
And that I will discharge...
And that I will discharge...
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
I was always told to keep the presentations under four minutes. As a new politician, that might be hard. Andre, would you please tie me, keep me on track? First of all, I want to thank these senior council members. They have been awesome and opened their arms up with warmth, and they said, "Listen, one small favor, politics outside the chambers. When we come in here, we're here for a job. We're here for a mission. We're here to serve the people of this community." I want to take a minute to thank my girlfriend Brenda. She was my right, left foot, hand in my campaign. My parents, and my son Brett is here, they've been really the driving force behind me to get here. As a retired state corrections officer, I spent 20 years working in a women's facility in Cambridge Springs. I learned to look trouble straight in the eye and smile and laugh and have a nice day. And we're going to do the best we can to keep Erie County on track. We're going to do the best we can to make this a popular, fun place to be, and we have to get people back to work. Thank you for your time.
Next, Mary Ray. Mary's a well-known public servant at our public library, and we welcome her and thank you, Mary, for having me administer your oath. Could you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Mary Ray.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support...
Obey...
Obey...
And defend...
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the County of Erie...
And the Charter of the County of Erie.
And that I will discharge...
And that I will discharge...
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office...
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
As a longtime public servant but a rookie politician, this event today and the ceremonies serve as a good reminder that there is, in fact, a difference between politics and government. I had the honor of serving as a longtime county employee with the library, and it was a privilege to do that because we helped people reach their potential. And I think we served the common good, and I don't think that there is any better avenue to take in life. This may be a rookie position for me as county councilwoman, but in fact, it's a step in the same direction. It's the common good, it's about serving others, and it's a privilege to be doing that. I want to thank my family for being here, my husband Bob, my mother-in-law Helen, my daughter Morgan. I know my other kids and family are here in spirit as well. And I want to thank the many peoples, many of you who are in the audience today, for being at my side while I was running for county council. And I know that we are all in this, fighting the good fight in the service of others. So thank you.
Next, we'll move to our judicial swearing in both Erin Conley Marucci and David G. Ridge. But before I get to that, I think it's very fit and deserving to recognize three of our members of our bench who were retained through a vote in November. We have Judge Demitrovich, it's her third retention, Judge Kelly, second, and Judge Bravender is first. In recognizing Erin Conley Marucci, this is somewhat of a historical event, as she becomes the third woman in Erie County to take a seat on the bench. The first was Judge Demitrovich in 1989, when she was elected. The second was Judge Elizabeth Calhoun, who not only was the second judge, but our first president judge, who was a female and a woman. So congratulations. So today, Erin Conley Marucci will be the third woman to join the bench. But on a historical footnote, I'm assured by some very thorough research that we believe she is the first daughter of a judge in Pennsylvania, so the first child, daughter of a judge to join the bench, her father being the Honorable Chad Conley. So congratulations. Before we get to the administration of her judicial oath, I'll recognize our district attorney, Jack Denary, for some remarks. Welcome back, Jack.
Erin and I have been fighting in the corner over there, just as we have the last 17 years, so these are actually parting shots, not remarks. No, you know, it's, we're losing a fantastic prosecutor here in Erie County, but the bench is gaining what I believe will be a most capable and well-deserved honor of being a judge. You know, Erin's career in the district attorney's office, people think of her convictions because they stand out, they make the headlines, and the cases that she dealt with certainly did. But they're her legacy, they speak for themselves, and I don't have to go through them, other than to say that she had very successful outcomes trying those cases, and she did so. Very difficult fact patterns, and as everyone in our office knows, and the detectives know, uncooperative witnesses, who nevertheless were summoned into the courtroom, brought to testify, not always in the manner expected, and yet Erin would achieve a conviction, a successful outcome. So that, those cases, they speak for themselves. What's going to serve her moving forward is her personal conviction. So we think of convictions in one sense in the criminal world, but it's her personal conviction that is going to serve her extremely well on the bench. She has always had a steadfast belief in the cases that she had. She never lost sight, however, of the victim of the crime. Those individuals who suffered the most horrible event in their life or in their family's life, and they had her as their soldier, and anyone who knows Erin, she was all in all the time. So as she begins this new chapter, it is truly her conviction, her personal self, that wants to do it right, shall do it right, do it with fairness, and it's her personal conviction that will serve the people in her courtroom and the people of Erie County very, very well. So congratulations to you, Judge Conley.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate those kind words. And now, if you're following along in the program, you'll see that Senior Judge Chad Conley, Erin Conley Marucci's father, will administer the oath. But I'd like to call upon him and Devi, because I think it's worthy of this, to make a few remarks about his daughter. So before the oath, could you kindly make some remarks?
Judge Tristola indicated I should keep it brief, so there it is. When I came in this morning, I saw my longtime secretary Patty Villabona reminding me that it was approximately 34 years ago today, it was January 6th, and it's January 5 today, that I was sworn in in this courtroom. When I started work, I was also reminded by President Judge Tristola that we started in his courtroom, and he was my first law clerk. So we've come full circle here now, for me to have the honor to swear in my daughter, and also to recognize and be so proud of the fact Judge Tristola, my first law clerk, now heads the court, and my daughter is joining. So that means a great deal to me. Erin is going to be a judge sworn in today, basically because of hard work. Erin has what's been referred to as grit. No obstacles, roadblocks have stopped her in anything she's ever done. And even though she has worked very, very hard, we all know that it took a lot of other people to help and support her in order for her to get here today. And no one worked harder than her sister Cory, who's seated over here. Also, I want to acknowledge the fact that the family that Erin married into, the Maruccis, are not only a wonderful family, but did everything and anything they could to assist Erin in getting elected. I want to particularly recognize her father-in-law, Bill Marucci, who passed away recently, and his wife Carol, who's here, who worked very, very hard for Erin, especially in the Sparklesburg and Corrie area. They have been God-sent. I think that you all know, to paraphrase Lou Gehrig, that I am, and my wife is, we are the luckiest people on the face of the earth right now. At least, that's the way we feel. We are so proud of Erin and what she has accomplished, and the kind of judge that she will be. I've known Erin all her life, and I've been a judge for a great part of my life, almost half of it, 35 years. And I think I know what it takes to be a good judge, and I can guarantee she has what it takes to be an excellent judge. And by the way, I've also known Dave Ridge for most of his professional life, and I can also guarantee that he will be an excellent judge. So Erie County is very fortunate on this occasion, I believe, and I am very thankful, and I am honored to swear her in now.
Before the oath, where is Patty Villabona? Can you stand up, please? There she is. That Patty was his first secretary, she was actually my first boss. So even though I had worked for you, Judge Conley, that's where it all started.
Your boss.
That's right. Judge Conley said it was his first boss, too. So thank you, Patty. And Judge Conley, on a personal note, it's hard to say this without getting too emotional. You took a chance on a kid from fifth grade or under. You believed in me. I wouldn't be sitting with her today if it wasn't for you. So I want to thank you, and I'm glad it's come full circle. Yes, and by the way, I'm not crying. No, does not. Anyway, we'll have the robe committee. Let me recognize, we have the judicial robe committee, we have William Marucci, who serves the community on the Erie Police Department's law enforcement force, Carol Marucci, Giuliana Marucci, Sheila Conley, Lauren Marucci, and Cory Conley.
Repeat after me. I, Erin Conley Marucci.
I, Erin Conley Marucci.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of the office of judge.
The duties of the office of judge.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you.
I'd like to start out first by thanking everyone who's here to support me today and who has supported me over, I mean, the span of my life, as my parents have, but also over the last few months, which have been quite trying. Anyone who hasn't campaigned, it's not an easy thing. It's life-consuming and life-changing, for sure. There are so many people I just wouldn't be here without today, and I am so grateful to each and every one of them. There's just not enough time or days to thank all the people I would need to thank. To my parents, you have motivated me and inspired me to achieve my dreams. This moment is more a testament to your successes than it is to mine. To my husband, I recognize the hard work and sacrifices you made for me to get where I am today. Thank you for always being right by my side. To Jack Denary and Beth Hurst, this moment for me is bittersweet, because I'm leaving my daily life with you. You have been my sounding blocks, my mentor, and my friends over the last 17 years, and for that, I will forever be grateful. And now, I'm going to join the current bench, and I look forward to using the tools I've learned observing each one of you and practicing in front of you over the years. I am humbled to be joining you today, and I truly hope to be half as good as you are and the judges that presided before you.
All right, next comes the swearing in of David G. Ridge. And first, I will call upon his brother, maybe Erie's favorite son, and that's the Honorable Tom Ridge, who has been well-known for his service to not only Erie County, Pennsylvania, but to our country as a whole. So we invite the Honorable Tom Ridge up for him.
May it please the court.
Denied.
Just wanted to say it. Honored, don't think you were the first one. You know, I begin my comment in that fashion because over three or four decades ago, I was privileged to be a member of the Erie County Bar, to serve before, actually to try cases in this courtroom, both as a defense lawyer and as a prosecutor. And at the time, I was trying cases with my friend, who was prosecutor at the time, Judge Chad Conley, and our dear friend, the deceased Mike Vasekka. So I will start again. May it please the court, but not as a lawyer or an assistant DA, but as a very proud brother. I was talking to my sister, and David will admit, she's the brightest and the best one of the three siblings. You've all enjoyed such incredible careers, but what's the path our brother took to get here? And she said, "Tom, I think it all began at 932 Colony Drive, which is in the Erie Manor by the West Erie Plaza." And it really sent a signal to me, because you should know this, and I don't think my brother would mind me sharing with you, the last stop on his final day, and the last door he knocked on was at 932 Colony Drive. So his roots and his commitment to service go back to a mother and father. Mother, no bigger than a minute, tough as nails, sang during the bond drives during World War II, tenacious, you bet, sacrificing, she did, loving, no question about it. Our dad, Navy, World War II, tradition of service goes back that far. One of the kindest men I've ever known, but his sense of joy and equity was very much a part of everything he did and how he lived. a part of everything he did and how he lived. He had a great intellect and a fabulous sense of humor. And so you take those qualities and you wrap them into one, and you got my brother. And by the way, Vicki and I agreed on that, you should know that. But then you combine those qualities with his own love for the law, thirty-plus years of experience, and his comfort in the arena, in the courtroom. Because here he always felt justice would be served regardless of the verdict, and for thirty-five years he dedicated himself to that purpose. And so from the Ridge family to all those who supported David, and candidly, you talk about all the judicial candidates, all the men and women who run for the offices, some win, some lose, but we should always be grateful for those who choose to put themselves before the public generally. There's only one or two victors that were given an opportunity in this remarkable place called America. So if you combine these qualities that my brother, and I'd like to say my sister and I inherited from our parents, remind you of a couple of final things. My dad was offered, my parents were offered a couple of times, the opportunity to leave Erie, Pennsylvania. You know, corporate America only asked you a couple of times to leave before they quit asking. He said, "Now, it's a great community. I love this town, I feel good about the people, I want to raise my family here." Obviously, David feels the same way, that's exactly what he's doing. We learned at the kitchen table, that small kitchen table in the dining hall, as my mother and father were very opinionated, one was Republican, one was Democrat, how about those conversations? But you learn to both sides, you learn to listen to both sides, respect both sides, and engage in a very civil way. And throughout all those years, we all were imbued with that notion of service. And I will tell all those of you, and I can predict this, and my brother, and I never speak for him, he's eloquent on his own right, but I will tell you this, whenever you appear before my brother, if the legal matter is significant in somebody's mind, or not terribly significant, anybody else's, in my brother's mind, there is no large or small legal matter before him. If it's important to you, it's important to him, and you will be given the attention and the focus that matter deserves. One of my favorite presidents, and David knows this, is Teddy Roosevelt. And one of my favorite quotes from Teddy Roosevelt pertains to my brother, and I would say with great respect, I believe it is embraced by the members of the Erie County Bar because I had privilege to serve with many of the predecessors here, some of whose pictures in the courtroom my brother's going to preside in, Judge Carney, Judge Anthony. But Teddy Roosevelt once said, "Justice consists not in being neutral between right and wrong, but in finding out the right and upholding it wherever found against the wrong. You will find the right, you will find the justice." In the courtroom of Judge David George Ridge. In behalf of my sister, our deceased parents, the honorary members of the bar that are here, and his friends, Barbara, Judge, and his beautiful family, it's my great pleasure to present my brother, David George Ridge, to the court and back. May it please the court.
Thank you, Tom. I can attest that's a very proud brother, but I can assure you that his sister, and yes, he does have a sister, a lot of people that I know have a sister, Vicki Ridge is the best and brightest of the three. But that has to be acknowledged. Now, I had the great privilege of knowing the Ridge family because I grew up with them. Tom and Laura Ridge were not much different than Elvin and Jerry Trissola, hardworking, grounded people, members of a parish, dedicated to doing the right thing. So as the story goes, I met David Ridge in first grade. I was five, he was eleven. I don't want to go through the stories, many of you have heard them, but we went through school together, and I have to tell you, sarcasm, humor was always a part of our friendship, but I have to acknowledge so was this, loyalty, trust, a deep admiration for his talents, the person he was, and yes, my love of him. He is one of my dearest friends, and it's not measured in the number of phone calls or texts we send each other, but the quality of time that went with him. Knowing that he is a lifelong friend, I can assure you that you, as citizens of this county, will be represented very well each and every day because of where he came from, who he is, and what he's committed to, and that is a testament to his great family. So now I have the honor of giving my friend the oath of office, and in the most loving way I can, I have teased him, I have said to him, "What took you so long?" So I will come down, and I'm going to invite the robe committee to come up now, and that will be, we'll have his wife Wendy, who let's recognize, she's part of a project called Mission Twenty-Two, which services our veterans and the concern about post-traumatic stress and suicide. And so Wendy, thank you for your help, his three wonderful children, Jessica, Taylor, and Dylan. We have the Honorable Michael Pomassano, the dear Barbara Samrock, and Vicki, as I said, could not be here. So I'm going to come down and personally administer it. My friend. In behalf of you, I, David G. Ridge.
I, David G. Ridge.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
Support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
That I will discharge.
That I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, my friend. Wendy, come on. Judge Ridge. Judge will, my honor, say.
I want to start by thanking Judge Pomassano and Barb Samrock. They and their families have done so much for the legal community and for the entire community. To my fellow judges, who have known so many of you for so long, it would absolutely be an honor to be a colleague of yours, I really look forward to it. To my family, I am the most fortunate brother, father, husband, and of course, son. I'm blessed to have all of you. I'd like for you to meet my staff, Donna Wilson, my secretary, Kristen Pratchell, my law clerk, and Jeanine Seabull. I'd like to say one more word about a member of my family, Wendy Ridge. I was given some good advice a while back about the best way to run for office and also the best way to serve. I was told, stay upright and humble, and Wendy has taken that on as a full-time job. She'll never let me be anything but humble. I appreciate it, I love all of you, thank you. Finally, I want to thank all of you for the opportunity that you have given me. Every time I take the bench, I will remember, it's an honor to serve. And now it's time to go to work. Thank you.
So welcome, David Ridge, Judge Connelly Marucci. So here we are, the nine members of the Erie County Court of Common Pleas. These final remarks, I'll keep them brief, because I know the brain can only absorb what the seat can endure. So let's just remind those that took the oath of office today, never forget how you got here, thank those that helped you get here, remember the oath that you took, and commit yourself each and every day to doing the right thing. With that, I wish you a happy new year, thank you for your patience, God bless. We'll see you.